You guys good? We call this meeting of the Nelson County Board of Education to order on January 21st, 2025. Please join our board in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome everyone that's here tonight and everyone that is tuning in as we go over the agenda for tonight in regards to the Local Planning Committee Training Session.
So we're fortunate to have Mr. John Gilbert and Greg Dunbar here from the Kentucky Department of Education that'll be facilitating a presentation to the board to help our board and community better understand the regulatory process for determining local planning committee membership, as well as acknowledging the purpose of the local planning committee. And finally, engaging in conversation around not only the regulatory requirements, but opportunities to broaden community engagement throughout the local planning committee process. With that said, we're going to invite Mr. John Gilbert up to provide a presentation that provides a summary of 702KR4, call them 180. Thank you, John, for joining us tonight.
Thanks. Can you hear on this?
He's gonna hold it a little closer.
All right.
There you go.
Now can you hear?
There we go.
All right. As I said, my name is John Gilbert. Thank you all for having me. I'm gonna go over the local planning committee process that's embedded in the planning manual, which is incorporated by reference through the regulation. So all the processes through the planning process is through that planning manual. Greg Dunbar, our project manager, is also here today. Should y'all have any questions, myself or Greg, we'll certainly answer those as we go along. With that, John again. All right. All right, so just as a presentation summary real quick, I'm gonna do some brief introductions, not just myself, but like the big picture of KDE. And you should have a copy of this slide, so should you have any questions, you know, you can email those who are on this. A role of the local planning committee as is defined in the planning manual, how you assemble, most of this presentation is going to be about assembling your LPC, your local planning committee. There are 12 or 13 points, and I've got a slide for each one of those. I want to try to go through those fairly quickly, but of course, I'd love to take your questions as we go through that. And then also to add to this toward beginning is community opportunities. There's a lot of public meetings and public involvements, and a lot of those are requirements of that process. And I'm gonna touch on that at the end before taking the questions and answers at the end. So with that, just to kind of go through, and obviously, we have a new commissioner, Dr. Fletcher. His email can be found on here. If you have any questions, he's our boss at the department, if you will. The associate commissioner is Matt Ross, who's over at the Office of Finance and Operations. And Hunter Hill is the Division Director, Jay Ritter. And then my director boss, Greg Dunbar, who's here today. Gary Lees, who's not here today, he is the project manager for Nelson County. He is my peer, if you will. He was not able to make it tonight, so I was honored to kind of take his place, if you will, to be here tonight to walk you through this. But all of those, all of the things that come from the district go to Gary, and he walks through those with your district. And of course, my name is John Gilbert. And then we also have a resource management analyst, Tanisha King. The role of your LPC, I'm gonna talk about the definition that's in the planning manual itself, roles and responsibilities, and meetings and public forums, the things that are required, the minimum requirements. Now, there may be minimum requirements for these, but it does not mean that your LPC can't meet more and that you cannot have more forums beyond those minimums as part of that process. So keep that in mind, depending on your needs for your particular school district. So the local planning committee, by definition, is an advisory committee to the local board. It is an advisory committee. They do help draft the DFP itself. They gather, basically gather a lot of the information of your district. It can be everything from the condition reports of your, the assessments of your facilities, which is through a process called KPEC, so I'm not going to get into that today. It's a whole other presentation for another day, but you know, having the existing conditions of your facilities and what they are, attendance records, you know, what is your population data and all those things, they take all that data and as a committee, they help use that information to create a draft DFP for your district. You know, they basically study that information, also financial. You know, it is advised, I advise districts to also have their fiscal agent kind of talk to their LPC about what their potential is for the district, so that they have a full grasp and full range of all the things you have to do to create a draft plan. Roles and responsibilities. Now, the first thing I'll start off with is the local Board of Education. You know, it is, the board provides basically the secretarial services and the resources to the LPC. The LPC itself doesn't necessarily have a budget. They don't make decisions from a budgetary viewpoint. They're an advisory role to the board to create that draft DFP. So should they need additional resources, they obviously should come to the board and your representatives, be it superintendent, who plays a strong role at starting this process for your district. The local planning committee itself, you know, the superintendent will help create that process and run the meeting until a chair and a vice chair are created. Once a chair and a vice chair are created, they will start to run those meetings and run that process. So you have four of the local planning committee. They have LPC meetings and they have public forums. Those are two different advertised type meetings that they have. The meetings themselves are for the LPC to gather, discuss, make decisions, and learn and inform themselves. The public forums, you know, at least a form with the LPC to be there to listen in from public input, to have a moment of the public to kind of come in and provide input to help incorporate, you know, those draft, the draft DFP that eventually goes to a board. This LPC shall be active through the completion and approval of the DFP. It's essentially a four-year term when you are a LPC member. It's not that that you meet all the time. You're meeting to draft this DFP when you're on a local planning committee. Once it's finalized, they don't really need unless there's formal requests to make changes during that four-year period. So they seldom meet unless there's formal changes requested by the board, and that's it. Again, I'm meeting for another day if you're doing the new process right now, but if you do have changes over the next four years, this is the committee that would oversee that, what we call findings and amendments. So they wouldn't necessarily meet until you make a request to make changes for any good reason down the way. That's a added role, if you will, over the course of time. So assembling your LPC. Now, my next slides are the ones I'm gonna focus on a little bit more, because I think that was the priority of this particular presentation today, was how that assembling of the LPC starts and where you're at. So that's primarily done in what's called Section 101 of the planning manual itself. You can find it online on KD's website. You all may know resources on your own local website. In fact, that may also have reference to that material. And I will also touch on what we have as a roster spreadsheet, which will probably be presented before you to show who the full LPC roster is, all 20 members. That would represent a cross-section of your community in a lot of your schools, if not all of your schools. I believe y'all have nine or 10 schools.
Nine qualifying schools per reg.
Nine qualifying schools that would be part of that roster. So, Section 101.1, and yes, I do have a slide for each section. There are 12 sections in Section 101, so getting excited here. The Section 101.1 basically starts to tell you about the superintendent's role, that they play a major role in starting this process. You know, the superintendent is ensuring that the LPC composition is in accord with the selection criteria, and at the discretion of the superintendent, LPC members may be selected. Basically, think of your K through 12 schools, that you should have some representation from those. There are exceptions to that. Well, you do not necessarily think of your career in technical schools, because a lot of that population is coming from your high school. So you wouldn't, so think of it as, you wouldn't necessarily have a representative from your ATC and your high school, because it's the same students. Like, we really want to focus on the students being served, and that you have representation for those students first and foremost, more so than the buildings themselves. So, you know, the high school representative may be also the ATC representative, if you will, because they're thinking of those students at high school, as you kind of see that through that process. Section 101.2 gives a, there's a table next, it's, the LPC itself is intended to be a cross-section of stakeholders for your community. Now, there is a table in the manual. You all qualify for, obviously, the 20 members. I've kind of graded out the other three, if you will. If you have four more schools, and again, you'll have nine qualifying schools that make up that representation. So the local planning committee for you all would be 20 members. The superintendent is a member, but they're a non-voting member. Then you have four parents, you'll have four teachers, four building administrators, your facility director, should you have one. There's provisions if some school doesn't have facility directors, they go to the superintendent or what have you. You go to a maintenance director or some senior person in your maintenance, should you go down that row. And similar for other positions, like your central office staff would have representation. In the case for you all, at four more, you have three community leaders that you would advertise for, and then one more member that you all get to choose amongst the five of you to be on that committee, and then a local building and zoning official. And again, should you not have something like that, there are provisions for kind of going down the order there, if you will. So 101.3, this is one that when I get rosters coming from the districts that I represent, is probably a top one that ends up being an issue from time to time. And what I've got underlined there is all schools should be represented if multiple representations of a school occurs. So maximum number of representatives from LPC shall not be in excess of one greater than other schools. I mean, basically saying, if you've got nine schools and there are 12 parent, teacher, and administrative positions, you're likely going to have, I think, of nine schools, I think three of those would probably have two. If you had one school that showed me three, and one school that showed me zero, I would be sending it back from a department, from a review standpoint, because we do provide approvals through that process at the department level. All right, 101.4, this is where we get, 101.4 through 12 are each particular position that I talked about on that graph just a little while ago, and what the basic criteria is. A lot of this is a framework that you at the local level can make decisions about how you go about it, but this is the general framework from regulatory and planning manual standpoint, that you can utilize at the local level to make decisions on how those members are chosen. So when I get to 101.4, you have more than four schools, obviously, and I think more than four SBDM schools are by ABS. So 101.4 starts to talk about the site-based decision-making, at least four of those, four of those positions between your parents and teachers should be SBDM designated members in some way. Now, this does not specify that they all four have to be teachers or all four have to be parents. It could be a blend, it could be all teachers or all parents or a blend of both, or split that down the middle. But in general, there has to be some representation coming from those particular groups. Parent representatives, you may have larger groups than your SBDM that have representation from a parent-teacher organization or association. Each school district may vary on this, but ultimately, your largest, I guess, parent-teacher organizations, when applicable, should be looking at parent representation from those schools. Now, not every single school will have a parent representative, but you would have four of the 12 positions be parents. So, you know, again, going through that process, you have to kind of find what best fits your needs for a school district to make those decisions moving forward. And all the while, thinking about the SBDM thing that I just talked about, so maybe a couple of those members are SBDM members, maybe they're not, maybe it ends up being their teachers. Again, those end up kind of moving towards the local decisions on some of that. Teacher representatives shall be made by any process developed by the district's teaching staff, and that the teachers have a voice, and that the teachers have the option to help choose who those teacher representatives are. You know, have four teachers make those particular roles, and those four teachers would be representing four different schools, not all coming from the same school. At most, you might have in this situation, you might have two teachers from a school, but that would be the most, depending on how all this pans out. Again, a lot of this is local strategy to try to get the best cross-section for your needs at the local level. Then, yes, sorry. Building administrator, you know, this is, again, this is like your principals, assistant principals. Again, these are the other four of the 12 I talked about. They represent schools, not just the building, but the schools that they serve. Typically, these are principals and assistant principals. Some schools have other administrators I'm not particularly familiar with, but that may qualify for those administrative roles, but they do have to be an administrator. So of your nine schools, you'll have 12 people represent those, and four of them will be teachers, four will be parents, and four will be administrators. And between those 12 roles, you'll represent nine schools and all of the students in total that they represent for the school district. That is 12 of the 20 positions. Of course, the superintendent I just mentioned by default, that's 13 of them. When I get to the next particular one, each one of these becomes one singular role, if you will. A facility director, that one's pretty easy, that one ends up being by default. I believe you all have a facility director, so that would end, by default, ends up being that particular person. Central office staff, so you have a central office here. Your central office would potentially vote on or come up with a way that the staff here would make the decisions on who the central office, in addition to your superintendent and your facility director, would represent district-level administration, I guess, probably the central office staff component of it. Business and community leaders. Now, the thing here says two, but you are in four more schools, so it will be three when it comes to you all. These particular roles are general community leaders that you would advertise in your largest local circulating paper, if you will, and advertise as you see fit beyond that. You know, these particular three positions, you advertise for them, you ask for resumes for anybody that may want to be, have an interest of having that role. These should come before the local board, and you as a local board would make those decisions for those specific three spots. So if 50 people send in a resume that they want to be these three spots, you all would make those choices as you see fit alongside your superintendent there, but you all would make those decisions at the local level. And of course, the board member, I think that one goes without saying, you'll make some formal motion, whether it's tonight or in a future meeting, selecting a one of your, one of the five of you to be on this LPC throughout the whole process. And of course, you know, they can always update the board at meetings, should you all choose throughout the process as you all see fit. And then the last one is local zoning official or building official. There are, in some districts, in some counties, there's one option, there's one person, and others, you might not have a zoning person, or there might be a regional person that does that. Realtors can also do that, but you try to start with the order of your local building official and kind of working its way down. There's always, and I see the connections off there, but that's fine. That got to the end of that particular section, so we're good. That, that's pretty much it. When you look at the planning manual, that's a page and a half, there's 12 points that I just talked about, there's 20 positions, and there's a lot of local flexibility in how you make those decisions to get those people back. I think what's most important is that you have a cross-section of your community, maximizing how you represent the students, more importantly, at these school centers and all the facilities that they're in, because ultimately, it is really about the school centers themselves and the students that they serve. You may have multiple buildings serving the same school, or you may have multiple schools in a building. So, let's see, that's, yes. Let me get to the roster, and I'll try to go through this fairly quick. We do have a standard roster that will go before you, and I'm just gonna show you what that looks like real quick. This talks about the process, which your superintendent will focus on in terms of like that. There is a process for members living in district, and there's a process for members living outside of district. So if all your members live within district, and we strongly recommend that you try to make that happen as much as possible, but there are situations where that might not happen. That, this is the process that, where that happens. Once the 20 are chosen, the rosters fill out completely, there is a signature line for your superintendent to sign off on. It will come to us, and the facilities branch will write an approval letter, you know, upon our review, and send that out, and you can begin the LPC process. Should you have any members that are living out of district for just cause or good reason, you would have to send that direct, and I would tell Superintendent Bradley, or Gary would tell Superintendent Bradley, to send an email direct to Commissioner Fletcher and copy us on that. We would approve the LPC at the branch level, but any out of districts, you need to provide additional information as to why that person's living out of district. You even have to do that for your facility director and your superintendent, or those obvious ones where, you know, if a person does that by default, you know, if your superintendent and Superintendent Bradley, I don't know where you live, if you live outside the district, you would simply say, I am the superintendent, I live outside the district, and I just need that approval. So all 20 members, any of them that live within district goes through the commissioner's office for those particular approvals. And just to give you a sample, again, I'm not gonna like spend a whole lot of time on this, the red's kind of a highlight here. The overall chart looks like this. Something like this should come before you at some time, before your final LPC is selected, just so that you see who's on here. And I know you all will approve four of those positions. Some of them are by default, others are chosen by other groups, as I've just mentioned. But just to kind of hit the red highlights, the top left is just filling those particular items out. You know, you have the school district's name, and each independent person and the role they serve, it starts with the superintendent, it goes down to the parents, the teachers, administrators, and all the groups I just talked about. And then we request, or we need their name and their address. We actually require that the addresses be on there, so that we know that they're living within the school district itself. We do have a resident or non-resident, we ask the people to put in the number one in these little spots, and we those tally at the end as they get chosen. The other section, which I think is a little more important and for y'all to understand, the top will have your school names, so Nelson County High School, your middle schools, all Kentucky Home Elementary, all the schools will be listed at the top. And then, once you start to put the numbers in play, and there's only a number one that you'd use, the bottom line kind of tells you real quick, so when you get this and you're looking at it, if you see a three on here from what I gather, something's not right. So there should be, in my estimation, you'd have nine, I think, three twos and nine ones, if I'm not mistaken, on there. So there'd be a lot of twos and ones on there for each school crossing over for what they are. Now, the at-large positions, those will be eight, and that's a standard eight. But that's just the form itself, that's the semantics, the details, if you will, that kind of come through the part of the process, which is important. One thing, and I'm gonna last leave you with this, the process itself, community opportunities. Now, your local planning committee is just that, they are a committee, they have public meetings, and not only do you have public meetings, the local planning committee, but you as a board, and there are things called public forums and public hearings that are required as part of the process. So I'm gonna touch on those as opportunities for the public, your LPC, and yourself to kind of chime in. your LPC and yourself to kind of chime in through the process. Starting with board meetings, you know, as it's concerned with the LPC process and the DFP itself, the board itself will discuss starting the process, not unlike you're doing tonight. Uh, and the selection of your board and LPC members, whether that's tonight or another meeting, you will have those opportunities. A review of a draft DFP is a requirement, uh, as another public meeting that the board will have. That's the draft, that's the initial one that's coming from your LPC. Now, contingent upon you all proving that, you know, you may not approve it, send it back in, in writing to your LPC, why or why not, or if you approve it, it would move on. But it's a public board meeting that you all would have to review that, uh, and would be part of what you're doing. Uh, and if you review a draft, there's also a public hearing that you would be approving, uh, that's towards the end of the process. There's also a final approval of a public hearing, uh, and the final DFP. Uh, not only the draft, but the final approval of that public hearing. So there's two that directly deal with the DFP itself from a board's perspective. One deals with the LPC, and it's not to say that you don't have meetings in between that are informational, where your board representative or your superintendent are updating you along the way as to what your LPC is doing. Uh, and any board members or public comments permissible of protocols? You know, what kind of protocols do you have for public comments at your board meetings for such things? That's going to vary from district to district. I don't really have a lot of comments on how that can kind of happen. LPC public meetings, um, the public may listen in, not necessarily orally participate, at the LPC meetings themselves. Uh, of course, the public is always invited to all those meetings, but that's why, uh, there are a minimum of three meetings. Uh, so you would have one for orientation, and there are two parts to orientation that we provide. One's a standard, uh, talks about the process, uh, overall. Um, and then there's one that's specific to the information that the district has provided, the state, and what that means to your LPC, kind of information gathering, if you will. There's a drafting of the plan, that's likely a meeting. Your first two meetings could be a combination of those two. You could have orientations at two meetings, you could have orientations at one meeting. It, it just depends on how you all play that out. The drafting of the plan could take one meeting or it could take five. I mean, it's really up to the local planning committee and how you see that process. Approving a draft plan with KDE comments, that's that third meeting, the minimum. What I'm showing here is kind of your, your, your minimum, if you will. You have to have a minimum of two LPC meetings before the draft plan comes to KDE. And Gary would review that, or I would review that, or one of our peers would review that. We would review and provide comments and feedback. This is compliant, this is not compliant. You need to make some decisions on making some shifts here and there. Uh, there, but there's usually commentary of that. And so a third and final, minimum final meeting would be the LPC meeting to approve those comments to send to you the board, who would eventually make those final approvals. Uh, the LPC may choose to have more than the required minimum. So, again, that's, uh, a lo- logical decision on, uh, how they've done that. Uh, I myself, I've been in practice for twenty years, or nineteen years before the five years I came to KDE. I've gone to numerous, I mean, I've been to districts that met twelve, their LPCs met twelve times and went to every single building. I've been to ones that have had the minimum of the three. And so you can do something or anything in between. It's really all about the timing and the importance for you all and where you're at in, in your process. Um, public forums. Now, this is where, I don't know the protocols that you all have as a local board, but from an LPC standpoint, the planning manual outlines public forums and public, and local planning committee meetings and public forums. And the public forums are where you have a forum show up from your LPC to list the public comment. So they could be just before or just after those LPC meetings, or they could be at separate occasions. You could have more than the minimum three, and they parallel those, those meetings, if you will. So it's not uncommon to see a meeting with the forums just before or just after those meetings or as part of that process. But they're separately advertised and an opportunity for the general public to speak, uh, just prior to or just, or prior to or just after those LPC meetings. There are some requirements I'm not going to get into about timing and things like that that are embedded and built into that. Um, there, there, there is a minimum, there's, uh, the quorum should be present. I did mention those two things, and the comment should be documented. Uh, yes, so any kind of commentary should be documented, should be available to your LPC, those who may not, that may show up to the meeting later. Should you have more than, you know, should you have a quorum yet and others show up later. And all this information should be av- available to you all as open, transferable information, uh, as you make decisions as well. Uh, the public hearing, once the LPC is done and they've approved the draft and it comes before you all, you all approve that draft, but you approve the draft for a public hearing. This gets advertised, this is a fourteen-day advertisement. The requirements of all the things in the hearing are required to come to the department upon the receipt of the final, uh, district facility plan that you all would eventually approve at a subsequent meeting as well. So this public hearing has, uh, a lot of, uh, CARES, I guess, Tupper 61 is what it's called up there, uh, you know, Open Meetings Act and those requirements. There's a lot of details I'm not going to get into in this meeting, but if you have any questions on it, feel free to give us a call. Uh, but that is an opportunity for public input, and it is recorded and audio recording. And we do require that the audio recording come to us. Um, you also approve a, a, a hearing officer that will run and incorporate that and report that to you all offici- in an official capacity. And that information does get sent to us alongside that final DFP before it's published. Um, so I think that's it. Any questions?
I have one about the, um, just to have clarity around the local planning committee and public forums can be two separate meetings or separate timeframes? Or can they be in one?
They need to be two separately advertised meetings.
Okay.
There's nothing that would prohibit them from being alongside each other, side by side or on the same night, or they can be different, that's a local decision.
And you said a quorum, say if they are on separate nights, what is the quorum of the LPC if there's twenty members? Is, do all people, all twenty people need to be at that?
Well, a quorum would be more than fifty percent, so.
Okay.
Uh, you know, if there's, I mean, there's twenty, there's nineteen voting members, you know.
So the quorum would be ten?
Yeah, ten out of the nineteen, yeah.
Alex, can we get a, oh, we're good on that?
All right. Because this, um, committee is appointed for four years, if members move or change, can they be replaced?
Good question, yes, they can. But the, the planning manual does call out, and, and don't ask me to cite the numbers, but there is a place in there that, once you have a chair and a vice chair, that has to come before the LPC. So the LPC would, you know, had somebody moved or whatever, or they made some official resignation. You know, by two-thirds vote, your LPC says, look, we acknowledge that this particular group, let's just pour the sacred conversation. Let's say one of your elementary schools, a teacher retired, moved away, is not able to function as the teacher representative for that school. So, whe- whether they acknowledge or not, it's known that that person can no longer represent. Well, the next, should the group need to meet, your, your chair would need to bring that forward to your LPC and say, hey, you know, we're one, two, three members short. We, as an LPC, do we need to acknowledge this? And by two-thirds vote, because you still need to make sure that you have a quorum, do we need to ask that teacher group or that parent group or whatever groups lost their representation? We need to ask them to pick somebody else just to, to, to take their place, whether it is during the drafting of that DFP or even later on, you're doing findings and amendments. If there seems to be a shortage of, of membership and you want to make sure that representation is there, uh, that, that, that gets brought before the LPC. And there are provisions that they acknowledge. Now, the LPC doesn't just go out and say, I'm, I'm going to pick Martha to be the parent for that particular, you know, faction. They, they go back to the group that, or in the process about what you all chose, choose that particular location to make that choice.
Are there any stipulations regarding parents of preschool children, um, serving on the committee? Is that allowable, permissible, especially their state-funded preschool? But then there's also tuition-based preschool. Are there any requirements around that?
Um, I don't know how to necessarily comment on that because part of that's embedded with all of your A-one schools and, 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 and there's such a cross-section of that, you know, between A-one and A-five schools, which is primarily your preschool from twelfth grade. I mean, that varies from school to school. So I don't know the details and nature of your particular school district. So, so I wouldn't do, like, some school districts are a lot of P through five, six through eight, nine through twelve. Others have a lot of their preschool pulled out, separate individual. Some are some combination in between. Ultimately, you need to make sure that you have the appropriate representation for all involved so that it's consistent across.
When talking about that and ensuring the, um, target number of members such as teachers, parents, et cetera, are reached, how does it determine which school those come from? So I'm assuming if you have, you know, forgive me, I don't recall the number, but three teachers, for example, or four.
Yeah.
How do you determine which school that they come from? Because you would not have one from each.
Yeah, I think that's a local decision and the framework from that. I think when you go to one-on-one, not, not, not put the burden on your superintendent, but you as a district as a whole, there's a lot of local decisions that need to be made as to where, how, how, how that's approached. And honestly, that's not a process I've had to go through sitting on this side of events, if you will. And, and, but it, it gives a lot of flexibility to the local level to make those decisions about how they, because you might not have the ability to have a administrator, for example, representing a school. You're very limited on your, on your administrative, you know, there's one or two people, and they may not be able to, for whatever reason, they might be out of district. So you really want to choose a parent or a teacher from a particular school. I, you know, to try to minimize that out of district approach, if you will. Again, I don't know the details of yours, but I mean, that's just an example.
Unfortunately, there's no perfect way to do it. We drew out of a hat the last time. It was the only way we could fill, that it was totally unbiased. So we drew out of a hat.
Yeah, and, and, yes, and that, that does happen.
Can the LPC members beyond the board rep or the superintendent provide updates to the board during their process? For example, if they want to share, uh, if we wanted to see some of the results of their findings, if they've done some, some type of extra data collection?
Um, I mean, like, you mean information that they wouldn't have already provided to an LPC?
Are you asking, would the local planning committee have a rep present to the board during the process? So I see that sort of being the board rep could report back to the board during a board meeting, you know, that could be an agenda, an actual agenda item that we're reviewing the LPC process and what they're actually discussing. Um, of course, we're also privy to those meetings. As board members, we can go to those meetings and listen and, um, be there to sort of hear what's going on, uh, which I would highly encourage too, because we want to hear what's happening as well.
Yeah, I, yeah, you just have to be careful.
Right, yes.
Number attending and all that, that, that's kind of a local detail that I'll have to.
Yeah.
Bow out of that as well.
Absolutely.
I think, Miss Lee, you know, you've referenced the relationship between the board and the LPC and how to ensure that that's a healthy relationship. Uh, I think that's the key of what you're, you're thinking about there. So there are no rules or limitations on what, you know, that conversation could look like.
As far as the, the data or information that that committee can consider, is that, I, I understand that some of that will be fixed probably and provided, but can they solicit additional information such as a survey or something?
Sure, sure. Yeah, there's always additional information. Like, for example, the planning manual mentions about transportation. You know, I mean, honestly, I have an architecture background and facilities. That's not an, an initial look, but there are cer- cert- circumstances. You know, you want your DP, you want your transportation personnel to kind of come to your LPC and say, hey, you know, we've got kids on a bus for three hours, you know. I don't know your situat- again, I'm giving generic examples here. But, you know, there are limitations to that, and those who are experts in those fields can certainly come before an LPC if they see that those things are, are issues. And it would be up to the district administration and the board to say, hey, we need to have our finance officer, which is part of the part two orientation, if you will, meet and tell the LPC what capabilities we have that are direct to facilities. Uh, our transportation director, what are the drive times for certain schools? Is that issue? You know, another thing that's in the planning manual is, it starts to define what a functional center is, and there's six criteria for that. And I can't recall all six of them off the top of my head, but transportation is one of them. And, you know, curriculum and the grades that you have and the performance of those schools, all of that can come into play in how you're looking at, uh, your particular facility plan. It's not just looking at the existing condition of the facility and calling it a day. Uh, there's lots of factors there. That's why you have a huge cross-section representing that committee to kind of report back to you, the school board, that essentially makes that final decision.
It's not just a brick and mortar discussion.
Correct.
So he said three to twelve meetings, so last time, uh, how, how did that work out? How many?
I think we had six or seven meetings last time. Um, in fact, if you go to, uh, ncsLPC.com, you can see all the meetings we had last time in the top right corner. Um, it has every meeting with every agenda right up here where it says LPC meetings. Um, and then, so it shows all these meetings. We had six meetings and a public hearing, it appears. Um, and each of those meetings and the outcomes of those meetings and the board's slide decks are linked here in addition to the minutes from those meetings.
Okay.
So, we had six. Um, this approval process didn't, uh, wasn't actually completed until late December because the fourteen days for the public hearing. And the KDE didn't approve the, its plan until their board meeting in February. So it was a five to six-month process total from start to end, just as some context. And then the board came back and made some further amendments along the way. Um, but, yeah, the, uh, outcomes of these meetings, for example, if you were to click on, uh, Wednesday, November third, it has slide deck, it walks you through all the data that we looked at, demographic data, uh, equity and opportunity data. Uh, we talked to districts from around the state during that meeting. So, you know, there's a lot of data on, in ncsLPC.com, uh, that references that.
Oh, one thing, Superintendent Bradley, I just kind of want to add. You mentioned about the approval process. One thing that's changed in the last two years, uh, HB six seventy-eight in the twenty twenty-two regular session, it's been extended for what we call House Bill seven twenty-seven in the twenty twenty-four session. Uh, the Department of Education has required upon a complete submittal to approve your DFP within thirty business days. And they, and by that direction legislatively, the department has designated a person that can approve, and we can get that publication. That was part, because if you were getting on a board agenda at the state level, they had six meetings every other month. And so by the time you got on those and you went through the state process, we were looking at anywhere from forty to a hundred and twenty days, tacked on at the end before you could get something on that could be published before you could qualify to do a project with restricted fund sources that were specific to those things. So that timeline has tremendously, uh, been shortened by that, those actions. Now, they are temporary, but we're still currently under those actions. So once you get to the end game, that end game's getting a lot faster from the department's end.
What is the expiration date on those, um, bills or resolutions? Are we, are we bound by a timeframe?
Uh, well, don't quote me, it's summer in twenty twenty-seven, Drew. June thirtieth of twenty twenty-seven, so you've got some time there, um, to look at that.
John, just to clarify, uh, to meet the requirement of SBDM, we have to have four members of the LPC that are on the SBDM council.
Yes.
And there's lots of ways to achieve that, And there's lots of ways to achieve that, but essentially they have to either be the parents or the teachers.
Yes.
Uh, previously, we required that teacher representatives also were part of site-based decision-making teams to achieve that requirement. And we, we did that because there are 27, uh, site-based teacher members and there are 18 parent members. And, uh, we felt that it was, um, responsible to pull from the 27 teacher reps that represented approximately 300 teachers as opposed to 18 parents that represented 6, 7,000 parents, right? So we felt that that was the responsible thing to do, given that context. We couldn't guarantee if we just let parents, you know, if we said, hey, you have to, uh, just hope, hopefully you choose somebody from site base, we couldn't guarantee they were going to do that. Um, so that's what we chose to do. That was a local decision. The reg's not clear on how you achieve it. That's just how we've achieved it. Any feedback on that?
No, I mean, that, that sounds accept-, I mean, I don't know that, what, why do you have four from, from one group or three in one or two in two? Ultimately, you have to have a minimum of four. And whether that, and I'd have to go back and look at it a little bit closer, but I believe it, it can be four, whether it's parent or teacher or two and two or four.
Right.
Or one, or one and three or what have you. So just, I guess, keep that in mind. I mean, that's part of the difficulty of the process. While it provides a lot of flexibility, you know, you, you have to come up and make some local decisions to see who's available to make to fit those roles.
We just felt like hoping that the parent would be on site base wasn't a good option. So that's why we chose to constrain the teacher process.
Anything else?
Heard you talking about the, uh, out of district LPC members. Is there, do, does in district, uh, members, are there potential members? They, could they take, uh, before more important than out of district? Or is that kind of something you all leave up to us? I heard you speak of it, but is that something?
Yeah.
We should look at in district first or?
It encourages in, in district first.
Yeah.
I mean, short of like trying to do a little more research, but off the top of my head, it encourages district, in district versus in district. I mean, I, I have seen examples where the request has come in and you've had a teacher for 27 years, literally lived two miles on the out, you know, just on the airside port, but they worked in that district for 20 some odd years. But, but they're also on SBDM and they, they played a role in that school. I mean, that's a good example of having good support that's, you would have solid backing from that kind of representation. You know, it highly encourages and really stresses to have local in district. I've also seen small districts, uh, particularly at the independent levels where a majority have to live outside because you have such a finite upbringing. You know, you're not in that situation. But, you know, it, it really stresses and strongly encourages to have in district. But when you have certain situations that are just not, um, allowing that to happen, there is the, the ability to go before the commissioner's office, uh, and, uh, have that consideration. You just have to document it and send it through that process.
Is the, is the commissioner's the only, he's the only one that's got to OK it?
Uh, it goes, it goes, I mean, obviously, it goes through his office and he, uh, reports that to the Office of Finance and Operations. So the associate commissioner will typically respond on his behalf. It, it's not to say that he wouldn't, but that's the current protocol, is he typically, uh, designates that out to the Office of Fin-, the associate commissioner in charge of finance and operations.
Okay.
I think importantly, the teachers select the teachers, the parents select the parents, the principals select the principals. So for us to put conditions around that's a little tricky in this case. We had two members last time that were out of district. Um, and those two members are still here, still on-site base, and they were chosen and they were, you know, highly productive in that process. So I think the precedent we, uh, we chose previously was that we just let the parents choose the parents, the teachers choose the teachers, and the principals choose the principals, assuming that they trusted that there was integrity in who they chose.
Yes. Good point.
Any additional questions? Thank you so much for being here tonight on this very warm evening.
Sure.
We appreciate the feedback and, um, giving us some good information to kind of build our plan from. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So, um, do you guys have any further discussion? I think one thing we didn't talk about tonight, just from my perspective, is, um, you know, one member we didn't talk about that's not required, it doesn't look like, is maybe having our board attorney present. I think making sure that we're following a lot of the, the procedures and protocols, that would probably be something that I would stress more, um, having them maybe not present at every meeting, but if they can be present at the LPC meetings, maybe not so much at the forums. Um, that's something that's going to be really important to me. And I hear what you're saying about board, uh, not having a forum, but we can attend these meetings. We don't need to sit together. We don't need to have conversation. But if we're just there to gather that information, I think that's really valuable for us to hear that in real time. Um, I think one thing that we didn't do last time that I would highly encourage, and again, we love our technical and IT people. We really need these things to be recorded. Um, not everyone has an opportunity to attend, attend these meetings, whether they're three, and I don't know, any school district is doing that in three, or six, or 12, or whatever our district looks like. I want to make sure our community has an opportunity to see these, if not in real time, to go back and watch it and really listen and absorb that information and absorb that data. There's a lot to hear in these meetings.
And I want to be sure that any materials that are presented during that meeting would be accessible to the public as well.
Absolutely. I think the, the website that the superintendent and the district worked on, I think is something that we definitely need to continue doing, having that access where someone can immediately look that data up and there are links there that follow. Um, absolutely think that's invaluable as well.
I think this also reinforces the need to, uh, dot, um, sorry, to amend the guest comment policy so that it's weird doing things in conjunction with our board meetings to give people an opportunity to speak.
Yeah. And I think that's one thing that I feel like, and I couldn't remember, we, I feel like we had guest comments at every LPC process. Did we not? Like, I feel like we did. So, and, and while I think that's extremely valuable, uh, now that, that there's clarity around that that forum can be different than the LPC meeting, it might be healthy for us to just really have the LPC focusing in on the information and then following it up with a forum so that they're getting that feedback, um, and really giving it an opportunity. Cause I think that's, we talk a lot about hearing that feedback, but if you're really concentrating on getting to work, you may not really be concentrating on the feedback. Um, so again, that's something that we can look at as, um, as a board to see what our priorities are around that, following the regs as well.
I have one additional reflection that is occurring to me. Um, the, the idea that four members must be at part of SBDM between the teachers and the parents. I tend to favor the two plus two model of two teachers and two parents being SBDM mi- members. My reason is that when SBDM councils, when people ran for that this year, there may have been people who would be interesting and serving on the LPC from those groups, but who did not realize this would be a year that that would be cycled. And so they chose not to. Um...
The issue becomes, uh, which schools you pick, right? So, and we can talk through that when we look at the schools. You'd have to identify certain schools that chose SBDM and non-SBDM in order to guarantee you met the reg, or you'd be sending it back and drawing out of the hat again.
Could we do that with the, if it's drawn out of the hat again, the type of member is drawn, maybe it's teacher SBDM, and then the other one's just teacher?
The chances are, uh, that we're going to have some parents that are on SBDM, but we can't guarantee it. So that's just something we can talk through as we look at that process.
You're talking that people actually choose to volunteer for these positions.
Well, that, then if they're chosen.
Yeah.
They have to be chosen by, by the parents.
So, that's a good question. So if they are site-based decision-making parent reps, do that, do those groups need to go back to their parent/teacher organization? Or is that considered chosen by the parents already?
No, no. Yeah, they still, the PTO still has to facilitate it irregardless. So let's say I'm a site-based parent and I'm, uh, nominate, I'm nominated, the PTO still has to vote on it. So, either way, site base is essentially powerless in the process.
Okay.
The only organization that would be, um, and we don't all have PTOs and PTA's, so that's, that's where.
That's the other, yeah.
That's where our team would work to determine what group that would be. Um, but site base is still powerless in the process of who gets voted in. We could have eight site-based members. I mean, you could have eight in theory, but you gotta have four.
So, um, I know, so I guess really the, the big question is, are we ready to move forward with reseating and reconvening the LPC? Um, I think from our board's perspective, I have not talked to Mr. Gilliland to see if he would be interested to, to serve on the rep, but I would like to nominate him as our board rep. I think you bring some uniqueness, because you also have like kids that are sort of spread throughout the district, um, and different age groups. And I think that's valuable to the conversation. When I've served, when I've served on the LPC, the first time my kids were in early middle school and elementary school, and it gave me a different perspective. Um, as a parent rep, I think it's important that you sort of have kids that are going to be living in this process. Um, so you have a perspective that's not, it would be different for me to look at that today than as a parent with a small kid.
Thank you for saying that, Miss Bowen. Appreciate that.
But again, I, I don't know if you're interested. So I would make that nomination.
And we can revisit that in the next few meetings. We, we have, uh, time and space to do that.
Yep. Any other discussions, guys? No more questions?
I'm fine.
All right. So the next thing on the agenda is, um, we talked about having a work session in early, oh, sorry.
We can just acknowledge the slides. They're pretty straightforward.
Go ahead.
Um, so this is, this is really a, a broad review of what we just discussed, except it shows it for Nelson County schools. Um, and just a reminder, it's a back and forth process. As you think about the relationship between the five-member Board of Education and the 20-member local planning committee, could go back and forth innumerable times. Um, this is our current district facility plan. It, it was expired in June of 2023. So we're about 18 months, uh, behind in terms of the regulatory process. However, it's not clear, you know, the board can still take action on the current DFP. It's not clear what that means other than it's expired. Um, so this is just a reminder of the board's action steps. If you choose to, if we choose to move forward in this process, um, uh, we would advertise in Kentucky standard for community members. We'd work with the board to, to make sure that the advertisement met really what you were seeking in terms of the characteristics of community members. Um, and as those community members showed interest, we would ask for some letter of agreement, letter of interest. Um, and then the final step would be voting to approve three community members, um, sometime in this process. This is a makeup from Nelson County schools of what, um, my current, uh, recommendation would be in terms of having, uh, a representative, a representative from each school and meeting the requirements of 702K or 4180. All, uh, elementary schools, based on the size, would receive one rep. Um, Bloomfield Middle School would receive one rep, and then the three largest schools by numbers would receive two representatives. Um, and that's just really just a, uh, trying to use the most common sense approach. If you've got 700 kids in a school versus, uh, 200 kids, the representation in that school looks a little different in terms of covering students. Um, from a community standpoint, if you think about, you know, there was a lot of controversy about community representation. There's no way to achieve absolute equity. If you look at this conversation, there are kids in every community that attend multiple schools. Um, New Haven students now attend OKH as well as Thomas Nelson, same as Boston. Uh, Bloomfield Middle, Bloomfield Elementary kids also attend Bloomfield Middle as well as Nelson County High School. So, um, Coxess Creek students split between Thomas Nelson and Nelson and OKH and Bloomfield. And Foster Heights students also attend Nelson County High, Foster Heights, and Thomas Nelson. So it's a true melting pot we have here in Nelson County. As we look at, uh, where our students attend, it's a mix. So there's really no, you know, way to get scientifically precise. This is about as, as precise as we can be in that.
But you'd also have to be extremely cautious when you're looking at that because there are parents and kids that are in all of those locations. You, you could end up with the re-, because Boston is now at OKH and Thomas Nelson. So you would...
And that's where drawing out of a hat is a little problematic, right? Um, at the same time, we drew out of a hat because we felt that was the only way to be unbiased. Um, so I think that here's the reality, you know, just as a larger political conversation, the people that want to choose to say that you're biased, they're going to say it no matter what you do. That's what we learned. Uh, so I think we tried to do this in a way that's the most high integrity and ethical as we can and continue to be fully transparent and know that, you know, we feel like this is going to get us the best mix and that people are going to be, uh, recruiting and seeking this position for the right reasons. Um, and we, you know, I will say we did not draw a hat. We drew out of a box. So it's a gift box. Yeah. It's, it was a little more official.
It was recorded too.
It was recorded. We still have the video. So, um, at the bottom, just a reminder, one district staff, one facility member, one planning and zoning rep. The planning and zoning rep did not vote last time. They are a voting member. They did not vote, but, um, we will be reaching out to planning and zoning to engage in that conversation. The planning and zoning really chooses someone from that office that they feel like is going to be a good contributor. The other issue is planning and zoning, the data hasn't changed much since we, since we last went through this process because the census data hasn't been updated, the demographic data hasn't been updated. Uh, there are some new developments in the county, but not significantly different from what it was three years ago, um, four years ago. So that's a, this is again, just a reminder of where we are currently trying to be, maintain the, the process. This would be the, the process we would endure. So tonight, the board initiates. Schools would initiate the process. Ms. Case would work with elementary schools. Mr. Martin would work with, uh, middle and high schools to ensure that they meet the requirements, um, of that process and that, uh, any connection between the district and the school is really, uh, run through them. And then the board would potentially review on February 18th, assuming that the process went relatively seamless and that you were able to review that, giving KDE some time to review potentially by March 4th. This is just the membership of the LPC. Um, I will say, probably the most important thing that came out of this was we uploaded the 80-page, uh, regulation into Google Notebook LM and asked, what are the characteristics of a high-functioning local planning committee member? And it provided these four themes and examples, uh, which I think are a useful conversation piece for us as we think about recruiting and communicating with schools, what it means to serve on a local planning committee. And I think even as we think about the community and seeking community members, there are some, some gold nuggets in here around what it means to be an effective LPC member. Uh, four years ago, when we went through this process, we had people actively seeking to be on the LPC to destroy the LPC. Uh, and obviously that's not, that's not healthy. So, um, I think, you know, sometimes we say we don't want to talk about the past or, you know, talk about history or something. Well, that's how it happens again. So, um, I just want to, I thought this was really powerful. I didn't, no one made this up, just the AI. So I think this could be a useful two, three-minute conversation for us to just say, you know, what works? What might we add to this? As, what might we consider as we think about characteristics of a high-functioning local planning committee member?
I think it's incumbent upon any of our representatives to strike that balance between representing their sector, like their area, the, um, geographically within the community, but also being open-minded. And so that, for example, whoever our board rep may be, would be someone who is thinking about the community as a whole and not forgetting any specific, um, area of the community, because we want to be sure that all voices are heard and, and considered and not just a majority rules. Thanks.
I would agree with that definitely, because it is hard. You know, you, you talk about the representation coming from an individual district or school. about the representation coming from an individual district or school. And I think there's a there's a naive side of that that makes you think, okay, I am representing, whether it's Boston or New Haven or Coxis Creek, that I'm just looking out for the people in my community. In reality, you are looking out for the students of Nelson County as a whole. And I think it's important that you you remember that in this process. And I think this is a great example of what we should look for in any member of our LPC, whether they're a community member or a teacher or parent, district staff, whatever, that everyone should live to this standard. But also reminding them that you are looking through the lens of what's best for students throughout the whole process.
And not forgetting the small community, too, and the perspective there and concerns and needs so that those can be addressed adequately.
Yes, absolutely.
So, one of the conversations that's come up with board members over the past few months is in dialogue is, how do we continue to think about the benefits to our local communities in our rural areas, as well as the benefits to our school district? How do we find that opportunity to support and understand the benefits that people are looking at from across the county as community members and also as educators and people that are on our school board? So, that's that's going to be a driving question for the local planning committee process.
Again, how do they do this in three meetings?
Right. The reason they do it in three meetings is they're not doing, and generally, those are the cases where they're not doing anything that's probably as significant. Or they don't have money to spend, you know, things of that nature.
So, maintaining status quo of
Right. And if you don't have any money, it's hard to talk about certain things. So, that's, that's one of the reasons. But so, this slide here is a slide we would take and modify when we advertise to our schools, just to say, you know, this is, these are some characteristics of LPC membership. Of course, if you're selected, I mean, I think with if you're selected and part of the process, we're, we're assuming that you've made it through the cut and you, these are things that are, you know, you represent
That you're seen as?
Yes.
So, are we required, we're not required to set a a number of meetings? We just know going into it's a minimum of three? And then, we build that as we as the LPC is seated?
The LPC chooses that.
Okay. Okay. Perfect. All right. Any further questions, guys? Comments?
So, we have consensus for that the district team would begin initiating the membership process and that we would begin working with the board on advertisements in the local paper over the next week. That's generally where we are.
And my understanding is, we do not take a formal vote on this. It's not required within the regs.
It is not required within the regs. We have asked AI and we have asked KDE, and they both agreed.
That sounds good to me. Any further questions, guys? All right. Now, are we ready to move on to the next one? All right. So, again, we talked about establishing a meeting in February. I sent out an email last week. I'm not sure if everyone got it, maybe February 4th. It sort of gives us a break from our whirlwind of January and gives us a little bit of time before our February board meeting for a working session. Would February 4th work for, I know Ms. Eaton's not here. I will reach out to her again and verify that date. But would February 4th work for the rest of you guys for working session?
Yes.
And that would be to sort of dive a little bit deeper into the general budget, where the funds come from, whether it's federal, state, local, and how those funds are allocated, basically, and not too debt, not too deep, but just sort of so we sort of understand what that looks like and have, you know, title, title money, grants. So, we sort of know where those are. Again, we are not trying to solve the world's problems in this working session, but it gives us a little bit of a deeper understanding of funding and where it comes from and sort of how it's used. We don't really understand the great breakdowns yet. We're just get there, get started. Does that make sense to you guys? I know you, Mr. Martin and Ms. Rogers will sort of be gathering some of that data for us.
We should add facility funding to that conversation as well.
That sounds good.
As we think about the local planning committee process, that's one area where we know the local planning committee reg falls short because of the way they define cost in the DFP hasn't necessarily been updated in alignment with current cost. Anything you guys would add to that? That's a pretty accurate statement, what I said.
They're just laughing it off. So, basically, I think that that sort of summed it up.
Okay. Got it. Thank you.
All right.
It'll be useful when we get there, building some confidence in those numbers. Because last time, I think as we built it, we knew it was not accurate. So.
So, I will need a motion to add Tuesday, February 4th, 2025, as a working session for policy and budget updates and LPC budget, something or other.
Yeah.
All right.
Can I make a motion?
All right. I got a motion?
Second.
Second. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Motion passes. And with that, if anyone doesn't have any further questions, I will say, we have a game that's underway at Thomas Nelson in memory of Ms. Lilly Smith. And that is going on currently. If anyone has time to go over there and celebrate her life, and that's a fundraiser for her scholarship fund. So, it's pink out, too. So, if you want to run home, grab a pink shirt. I think the girls varsity games begins at 7:30. So, with that, we need an emotion to adjourn.
Can I celebrate? And the, we had a note today about the Nelson County High School wrestling team
Yes.
Doing well and qualifying. They were second in the region. So, they compete this Saturday.
That the wrestling team at Nelson County High School has really taken off over the last two years. They are doing amazing things and that program is growing. So, they have a lot to celebrate, for sure.
And also, I want to say thank you to many people who have been here and made possible to have three meetings this month.
Yes.
I know that's a, that's a huge time commitment for many of our, especially our central office people
Yes.
Who organize these events for us. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. All right. I need a motion to adjourn.
Can I make a motion?
All right. Any second?
I'll second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?